Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Good evening.
Rosemary.
Hello, Rosemary.
Hello.
Hi, Peter.
Uh, good evening. How are you folks, all of you?
Good. How are you?
Just great. I have a few public comment, uh, comment, uh, things on, on, uh, parking spaces and, and, and winter rules again. I'm sort of a broken record on that, but I, I think there's some opportunities that we ought to discuss or you ought to discuss, uh, before we go ahead and rebuild the North End. And, and I think, uh, having a high, uh, parking, um, bar is, is inappropriate for the future. So, uh, but I'll wait till the public comment and you, you come into session to talk about that.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, well, we have a, a fourth commissioner of coming on, so we will be able to call the meeting to order. Caitlin, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, well, it is five thirty, so why don't we get started and, and hope that, uh, some other, uh, commissioners come on in a minute. Uh, that's particularly important because just so everybody knows, uh, my daughter is having surgery today and it ended up being scheduled for afternoon. So I may get a call from the doctor or the hospital once it's done, in which case I will, I will, uh, either sign off or at least mute myself and, and take video off and I might or might not be able to come back depending on how everything happens. So the vice chair or, or maybe the vice, vice chair might have to take over, but right now if I have to leave, there's, wouldn't be a quorum. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. First item on the agenda is any adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda we need to make? Yes, Rosemary.
Uh, David, uh, and, and the commissioners, I'm just wondering, um, I see we're going to be talking about some interim zoning changes uh, in new business and I'm wondering if this would, um, be part of any discussion we may be having at the forum on October eighteenth. And it seems that I just want to make sure we're all talking from a common voice that night. And so if we can just add that, uh, as a discussion point, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the discussion of interim zoning is really very preliminary.
Yeah, understood.
There'll be anything specific, so I think, I think we can probably take that up as part of that discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What happens going forward.
Thanks.
Okay, so we've got, uh, Becky has just come on as well. Hi, Becky.
Hello.
So, I will repeat what I said earlier because you're the vice chair, but I might have to leave during the meeting because my daughter is having surgery today and it then that, ended up being, uh, scheduled in the afternoon. So if I should get a call about that, I'll have to, uh, I'll have to check out at least for a while. So as vice chair, you would get to take over.
All right, I am almost ready.
Okay, but I'm, my, we'll, we'll just go forward. So, um, yeah, when we talk about interim zoning, we'll, we'll also make sure we talk about, uh, if that has anything we want to bring up or that should come up during the, during the, the October eighth meeting, very, uh, uh, forum. Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, uh, the next item is approval of minutes from the September fourteenth meeting. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes. Um, I did want to just note Janet that my last name has an S on the end of it.
Okay.
That was misspelled a couple of times, but.
Sorry about that. I will fix that.
That's okay.
And is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it. Sorry.
Uh, oh, I'll say Rosemary seconded and then there, we had one correction, which I think is, is just clerical, so does, doesn't really need to be an amendment to the, to the minutes. Uh, are there any, uh, adjustments or other changes to the minutes? If not, a call question on approving the minutes from September fourteenth. Uh, I was not at the meeting, so I'm going to abstain, but all in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand.
Aye, aye.
Okay, uh, Raylene, uh, did you say aye?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so the minutes are approved, uh, with, with four votes and one abstention, who was me? Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment for something not on the agenda. And, uh, Representative Anthony mentioned before we called the order that he wanted to, uh, comment during this time, so. Uh, the floor is yours.
I do, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much and, uh, welcome to Caitlin. Um, I, uh, have been on this topic before. I want to urge you folks as speedily as possible, knowing it takes time for the council to act on a recommendation to try to find a consensus to reduce the, uh, required parking spaces per residential unit. Uh, I really think going forward, that's gotta happen and we're in a rebuilding stage and it would be, I think, unfortunate if we were building and designing with, um, parking requirements that, uh, would not, uh, withstand the test of time. So that's my, uh, repeat call to review that, find a consensus, how to lower that, um, uh, dedication of real estate. And closely aligned to that, uh, and with new leadership in the DPW, I really would urge you folks to urge the council to consider modifying the winter parking ban as it stands now, which is a blanket ban from date to date as opposed to a more nuanced approach. And I think not only is it opportune because of new leadership at DPW, but it's also opportune because there may be funding opportunities if there is a technological aspect to your thoughts on that, uh, some kind of warning system if we do not go date to date. Uh, again, I, I really think this is a, an opportunity that should not be missed if you can find consensus and forward a, uh, recommendation to the council since it's an, it's an automobile or vehicular ordinance, it would be they who would have to, uh, essentially attack that, but I really would urge not, uh, letting another meeting go by, uh, if you can find consensus to make a recommendation to the council. And with that, I do myself have another obligation at six o'clock, but I wanted to get that on the table. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say Jake, you have to unmute, but I have to unmute. Um, Jake had his hand up, so I wondered if he had, uh, uh, comments to make.
I do. I, I was just, well, commenting the question. I was just curious what, where the planning commission is on the Raze Grant and Bylaw Modernization Grant. I believe the, the Raze Grant is the money flowing through CCRPC, but it's a hundred and seven thousand dollars for downtown transit oriented development and it seems like it would intersect quite a bit with the, um, uh, well, I think your agenda items is North End Plan, but probably means the North Main Plan, right? Um, I, so I'm just curious where the planning commission is on that and the Bylaw Modernization Grant that was awarded, I think, back a few, back in winter.
Yeah, so Janet, you had your hand up. Do you, do you have a comment to add? Or respond to that?
I can respond to that if you, if you want. Um, as, or I can, you can, as chair.
Okay, well, I can, I can start. Um, so the grant for the, the, the North Main Street study is on the agenda tonight because we have a proposal and, uh, hoping that we can discuss that proposal tonight and, uh, accept the proposal and, and move on, get the process started. Um, so that's, that's the one item. The other item as far as the planning grant is, uh, there was an RFP issued. It did not receive any responses. Um, so I think Janet is preparing to reissue it and has gotten some more planning companies that could be added to the list. Uh, so maybe Janet could, could speak to that a little bit.
Sure, um, that's exactly that. Uh, we got no responses from anybody, no phone calls, no, nothing. Um, I'm gonna put it back out there with an extended date. Um, I've got a few more names of consultants that are actually in Eastern New York and Northern Massachusetts, um, that have done work in Vermont, um, other than the, the same ones that are on the list from ACCD, um, for consultants and, uh, put it back out there and, you know, see if we could get another bite at it. Any suggestions from you are thoroughly welcome, um, in, in your day job and the hat, the hat that you wear during your day job, Jake, would be great.
Um, well, my main, my main question was really about the, the Raze Grant, um, and since it's overlapped, it's gonna have an overlapping scope with the North Main Street Plan. And, uh, and I was wondering if it's, you know, if there's a contractor for that, where that is in the process.
I don't know what you mean by Raze Grant. You're talking about the Bylaw Mod Grant and that's the one we didn't get any, any.
No, no, the, the, um, the city has a hundred thousand dollars for transit oriented development, uh, planning, integrated land use planning and transit planning. Um, and, uh, as I understand, the, the money is federal money being administered by CCRPC. Uh, Barry was selected as a recipient for those funds to do that work and it, it would have an overlapping scope with the North End Plan. And so I was wondering, you know, where that is and how that, if, you know, if there's gonna be coordination between these two planes.
Um, I am unaware of that grant. I haven't seen, um, any signed grant, um, no internal chatter about it, so I can definitely ask, um, Brian, Nicholas and anyone else who, who might know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I echo Representative Anthony's encouragement to reduce parking requirements, if not eliminate them outright.
Hey, thank you. Uh, now Janet?
Yeah, um, I just, I wanted to put in that we have, uh, Monday morning this coming, our internal parking team meeting. Um, we're gonna be talking about a few, we haven't met in a few months, um, so if there's any outcomes of tonight that I can bring forward to Monday morning's meeting, um, I think we are gonna be talking about the parking ban and if there's anything that we can do, anything that the Public Works Director thinks he can do, but if there's anything, any outcome from tonight that you'd like me to bring to them Monday, I, I absolutely will.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, I don't see any other members of the public at the meeting, so I think we can move on unless, unless, uh, anybody had more comments. The next item is old business, which is talking about the planning grant proposal and this is for the North Main and Elm Street, uh, plan and attached to the packet is, is the proposal. And we had a subcommittee that, that, um, I think looked at it and I don't know if they, if anybody has a report on that, but I'm, I'm hoping we can discuss the proposal and if we're, if it's acceptable to the group, uh, to vote to accept it and, or have the city accept it and get the process going. So I don't know if there's anybody here. Uh, I know Joe sent some comments and, and was involved in that process as well. Did you have something, Becky?
Um, I was just gonna say, uh, we, I think we reviewed it individually, um, and chatted a little bit over email about it. Um, I think it's fair to say that all three of us were, uh, encouraged by the response and thought it was a good one. Um, a, a lot of our questions were more about like managing what the planning commission's role is in this process and how to, um, I think like what I would describe as change management throughout this, uh, to bring city council along with us, to bring the community along with us as we, uh, go down this path. Um, yeah.
Okay, so I'm kind of taking that, that, that's, um, you know, suggestion that we should go forward, but we do need to, uh, spend some time making sure that the planning commission is involved and that the process moves smoothly and, and involves the community. And I think that the proposal, as I read it, that, um, we have a pretty good plan for community involvement, but a lot of the responsibility for actually publicizing and getting the community, uh, getting people to participate in the process is going to fall on, on the city and the planning commission and, and, and that process. Um, that was, that was sort of what I would take away from that. Uh, Barry's always had a challenge getting people to come to sort of these sorts of meetings. Uh, I think the city's figured out that if there's food involved, maybe more people come. So, so our, our Berry, you know, our Berry, uh, flood recovery discussions have included pizzas as, as part of the pizza dinner as part of the process. So, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to, uh, I, I, Janet, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong to, to recommend that city accept the proposal. I don't know that we actually are the ones who do it, but we should make a recommendation, uh, that city move forward with the, with the contract that's proposed.
Yes, your recommendation.
Anyone have any thoughts or comments? Or does somebody want to make a motion? Uh, Rosemary?
Uh, the only question I have, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, the proposal, but just from memory in reviewing it, is when in the process the council is involved? It just from memory, it seemed as though it was closer to the end. And I just don't want us to be in a position like we were with the parking issue that, um, you know, people aren't on board. So, thank you, Janet. Um, I don't know how other people feel about that, but that would be my only comment. I think, I think the proposal itself was great. Meets our, you know, financial expectations and, and, and this company is the one that worked with us before, correct? Yeah. So anyway, that, that would be my, my only comment that, that we, um, consider the timeline when the council sees things.
Okay, uh, thank, thanks for the comment and, and I think, think that should be part of the process, but you know, ultimately the plan has to be presented to the, to the city council, uh,
Right.
and, and go from there, but I think we can, we can certainly encourage, um, council members to participate and make sure that, uh, the city council and, and relevant staff and know what's going on and get invited to, um, some of the, the site visit and other things because they're really stakeholders, as are we.
Great. Thank you.
Are there other, any other comments that anyone has? I think one thing Joe did mention is because it's, it's October twelfth and the, the contract proposal indicated starting the process on October sixteenth. Um, the process will probably be pushed back a little bit and it might be good to ask for, for a new kind of updated calendar schedule so that we can all have an idea of how the timing will work. So I'd hope that's something Janet could convey when he talks to, could, when she talks to these folks. Anyone else have thoughts to share on the, on the proposal? Would anybody like to make a motion to, uh, recommend acceptance of the proposal and moving forward with this contract?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
I can second.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to, uh, recommend moving forward with the, the contract and the proposal. Uh, are there, is there any more discussion or any, anybody else have anything to add? Okay, if not, um, can call the question. All in favor, uh, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have adopted, yeah, we've adopted the motion, uh, so thank you, everyone. Uh, the next item on the agenda is really, uh, further, furthering the discussion, which is, uh, the planning commission has talked about, um, the planning commission has talked about a site visit and, and taking the plan we have now and going out and looking at the, the, the Elm Street and North Main and, and Summer Street area and looking at the plan that we have now and, and some of the things that are in the plan have been done. Some of them probably will never happen at this point, um, but maybe we would want to incorporate that into, uh, working with contractor so that we could try to plan a site visit in conjunction with, with part of their work. And I don't know what others think and if it's prob, it's probably something that we might try to schedule as a work session. Uh, so I don't know if folks are interested in setting up a site visit and if so, we can try to look at calendars and see when that might be being mindful that, uh, it gets dark earlier. Yes, Caitlin?
Yeah, I would be very much in favor of, of doing that. Um, I think, you know, as many commissioners as can be there. Um, and maybe that's also an opportunity to, to invite some of the city councillors as well so that they're involved, you know, at the beginning stages of the process. Um, I think that's an excellent idea and, and yeah, we should try and do it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Before it gets too cold.
Yes. Okay, uh, Raylene has her hand up. Uh, do you have something, Raylene?
Yeah, I just, I too am in favor of the site visits. I think that that's much easier and better to see and then just talk about it. I, I've lived here a long time and I still don't always know what streets are what when we're talking about them. So I think that would be really beneficial.
Okay, uh, I, so it sounds like people would like to try to plan a site visit. Uh, certainly I know Joe wanted to do it and I think Becky was nodding her head yes as well. Um, so maybe what we could do is talk about dates and times that might work for people. As I said, I'm not sure it should kind of take the place of a meeting. Um, but I don't know if people, people are available, uh, earlier in the day on weekdays or whether we should talk about a maybe a weekend morning or whether we want to just try to schedule another Thursday meeting at five thirty or five o'clock. Anybody have preferences or thoughts about availability? I'm retired, so unless I'm in Boston helping take care of my daughter, I'm around. Uh, anyone else have scheduling thoughts?
I work nine to five, but I do telework, um, four days a week. So, uh, other than Wednesdays, I'm usually in Berry and could certainly, um, I, I have enough flexibility in my schedule that I could make a, a daytime or maybe like late afternoon kind of, um, visit work if that helps, um.
Would other folks be available at, you know, say four o'clock in the afternoon, uh, sometime?
Yes, I can be available, yes. For sure, I can.
Okay. Yeah, and Becky?
Yep, I, yep.
So I'm gonna suggest, um, Thursday, October twenty-sixth at four o'clock. Would that be something people could do? Cause Caitlin said no Wednesdays. And I'll actually be in Berry that day, as far as I know. So if that, if, if that works, uh, maybe we could, we could get that on the calendar. Does it work for you, Janet, by the way? And, and I think what we would do is if, if we're moving forward with the, with contract, we should let the contractor know of that plan and, and find out if it's something they want to participate in at that point. And I think it would also be fine to invite the city council, let the, or at least let them know and let them know they're welcome to participate in, in the site plan. Uh, does, do Jake, do you have any thoughts about that?
I'm sorry, I was multitasking. Do I have thoughts about the site visit timing?
About a site visit on October twenty-sixth, four o'clock and that we would let the city council know so that if they wanted to attend, they'd have an opportunity.
Yeah, I, I think they'd love that. I will say the council has pushed back on early meeting things, um, before, uh, before six o'clock, um, because most of, most of us work, um, jobs, but, uh,
Right.
but, uh, I think extending the invitation would be really appreciated.
I mean, the challenge is if we meet at six, it's dark outside, so it's hard to do a site, harder to do a site visit. So if, I think if, if there's agreement, let's, let's try to plan on, on Thursday, the twenty-sixth at four o'clock and maybe we can meet at the city hall and, and Janet can get a little, a quick agenda together so that we can do the appropriate public notice and all.
Right.
Okay, so we've, we've gotten through that item. So now we've completed our old business. The new business item that, that I requested Janet add and, and it's, it's right in line with what Representative Anthony uh, talked about as well is, uh, interim zoning. Uh, particularly because our, our planning grant process has slowed down because we haven't been able to find a contractor. And because there's the flood recovery, uh, things going on, it's, it seemed that, and, and a housing crisis, you know, shortage of housing, uh, it seemed that this might be a very appropriate time to consider zoning changes sooner rather than later. And one process to do that, the fastest process to do that is interim zoning changes. And interim zoning changes are, are things that the city council basically adopts, declares that there's an emergency and, and can adopt, uh, changes in the zoning with just one meeting. Uh, and I thought it would be good for the planning commission to start thinking about and talking about, uh, if there are some, some things we might suggest the city council approve or even, uh, see if we might attend a, a city council meeting or a work session, however the city council wanted to, to kind of go at talking about interim zoning in the fairly new future. Uh, to talk about thoughts and ideas and see if, if there's some consensus about things that could happen. And some things that I had thoughts about for short term for the interim zoning is, is talking about the parking requirements. And Representative Anthony kind of described those issues pretty well. Uh, and I know there's, there's different perspectives in the community about uh, what the parking requirement should be and, and, or whether there should be any at all. But I think that's worthy of discussion because it does have an impact on the ability to, uh, bring in new housing or if there's a major redevelopment that happens in North Berry, for example, the parking standards would, might well impact the design and, and how that could work. Uh, another thought that crosses my mind is talking about the density requirements that the city has for, for zoning. Before the last zoning change, there were no density requirements, as I understand it and recall. Uh, but I know that there are a number of older, older unit buildings in, in the city that could have more living units in them, more apartments in them, uh, but for the density requirements because they're existing buildings that sit on very small lots and because there has to be a certain number of square feet of lot space per unit, they can't, can't add them. So I think that's something that would be worth, worth a, a discussion, whether it would apply to all zoning districts or just some. Uh, that would, that would be something that could possibly fairly quickly add some housing units in the city and again might impact, um, any redevelopment of, of flood damage properties. Uh, so that was another thought, uh, that I had. A third thought is that the state statute is changing, uh, zoning, you know, from the state level to allow duplexes and. you know, from the state level to allow duplexes, and in fact, in areas where there's water and sewer, I believe, um, up to four units. So that's another thing the city could consider is adopting changes uh, that implement that and maybe even implement it before the, the state law goes into effect. Or at least make, me, you know, make clear that maybe the city welcomes that sort of development. So those are some thoughts I had, I don't know if other people have thoughts, but the whole idea would be to have a discussion and think about things that could help jumpstart, um, housing or take away things that are, are impediments right now to, to more housing coming online. So I, now that I've said my thing, I'll shut up and let others speak, Janet has her hand up.
Thank you, David, um, excuse me. Um, one thing that I had thought of, and, um, is to, uh, extend, excuse me. Extend our, uh, design review district to other areas, um, that aren't currently covered, that maybe could be covered, um, so, so what I'm suggesting is, uh, we, we all, uh, remember the, the Maple Avenue house that came down, that basically there was nothing that prevented us from issuing that demolition permit is not in the designer review district. If we extended that out, that would force the owner to go, at least to go in front of the DRB, and then prove the the demolition test, which is comprised of six steps. Um, it would, it would, if anything, slow down the process, and then the DRB, um, would, should vote, uh, to deny if it didn't need it all. Um, that's my thought is to, um, take a look at expanding, expanding some of the designer review district. Uh, say in the other, other end, you remember we extended it up Washington and now South Main when we redid the zoning three years ago, is to maybe go in the other direction. So that was one thing that I had quickly thought of, um, it's been simmering, so, thank you.
Okay, well, you know, I do think that, you know, now the process would be putting out ideas and seeing what, 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 uh, the city council, what, what planning commissioners think as a group, and what the, ultimately, the city council thinks and decides. Becky?
Thanks, yeah, um, I wholeheartedly support revisiting the parking requirements, the density requirements. Um, those seem like good places to start, uh, especially if there's a previous zoning that we could go back to, that could make this a little bit of an easier process, that seems like, uh, a kind of like low risk, easy thing that could be considered.
Yeah. I, I agree, you know, one of the, one of the things I think we want to be careful about is there are, there are a lot of things that control how many units can be on a property, one of them is density, one of them is parking. But there are other things, setbacks and, and square footage per unit and all those things. And some of them, I don't, I don't look at them as low hanging fruit, because I think they're complex issues and they're interrelated. Uh, but I think the dense, I think there are some low hanging fruit things, one of them is, is, is parking and, and you know, also as Representative Anthony, Anthony said, uh, I think if we could address parking in the winter, that might help. Help people find more consensus. Uh, Jake?
Yeah, I would just, um, add on the parking thing, I think, uh, Council of those did make a fair point about um, that there can be parking nuisances when there are parking shortages, right? Um, and so I think if this commission were to think about alternative ways for the city to get a parking nuisance, since zoning is a really blunt ordinance, because it requires people to build things that they may not need or want, it doesn't address the nuisance, whereas in our parking ordinance, we could look at on-street parking, but we could also look at people parking in unauthorized spaces, or the zoning code could look at when people start parking on their front lawns, that they're not using their land in an approved, permitted way. Um, there's ticketing authority, so there's that. Um, so I, I think, you know, as you peel back parking requirements, um, we also got to think about the other side of it on the nuisance ordinance, and, um, we also have a minimum of housing standards ordinance for um, uh, for rental properties, and, uh, I think it would be fair to require a disclosure to tenants how many assigned spaces they get uh, with their apartment unit, so that they know upfront, the city knows how many parking spaces there are. And when people start, um, parking in ways that negatively impact uh, the, the neighbors or, uh, what should be open space, that there are ways to deal with it. Um, on, on, uh, the demolition, I think this is a really important thing because uh, I know, uh, Commissioner Iverle and Munier were at the meeting on Tuesday and they heard from the Commissioner of Housing, how we've been losing housing units, um, over the past decade, and I mean, we've lost, we lose them to fire, I think of the, um, the apartment building that Al Flori owned on Brook Street, that's been torn down, the Catholic Church is tearing down a house. Um, the Beverage Baron wants to demolish, the, um, the owner of the Beverage Baron wants to demolish the Italian Baptist Church. Um, trying to think, well, there's that auto shop over by the Amishan, we're losing grand list value, right, and we're losing buildings, we're losing heritage. Um, and it's fine, that comes with financial impacts for the city, so I think making sure that we retain what we have as much as uh, possible, and if, and if a person no longer wants the property, they always have the option to put it up for sale. And allow somebody else to, um, uh, have a chance at that, um. So I, I'd, I'd really encourage, um, you to think a lot about, uh, those demolition provisions, I understand from Representative Anthony the demolition used to be approved by council, I don't, I don't necessarily think that's the best use of council's time, but, um, but I do think like having some higher level of review, uh, for demolition makes sense, and that's where Janet's suggestion to me uh, you know, extending out along, at least along our corridors, uh, uh, main corridors could be a great way to get better design outcomes too, because that's our front porch of our community. It's, it's what people see when they drive through and, and we want it, um, looking at its best. I would also add to the interim zoning to look at minimum lot size, more and more studies throughout the United States are showing that minimum lot size is a key factor in, uh, affordability, um, and, and also lot width at the front edge of the street. Um, and it's particularly can be important for townhouse style development, where there's a building on its own lot, but it shares walls. Um, so that enables a potential developer to sell those with, uh, federally backed mortgages with footprint lots or smaller lots um, that a condo is not possible with a condo unit. Um, and so, uh, figuring out how to allow more townhouse development and allowing uh, those two lot subdivisions that could, um, support, um, you know, a scattered site project by let's say Central Vermont Habitat or a private developer. Maybe they're looking at affordable modular construction for a single family home or duplex or a fourplex like that were really common after the war. Um, those, uh, those could be, uh, pretty powerful ways to incrementally grow homes in the community.
Hey, uh, Raylene, did you have your hand up?
I did, but I'm, I'm not sure. So I was at the meeting the other night and I heard, uh, Doug Burnham talking, and one of his suggestions was, um, that we may, uh, find a path forward in elderly housing, and, and then we hea- heard a gentleman actually from, I believe, the Berry Manor uh, get up and speak as well, and I'm just wondering, um, i- if that, if that's anything that we can deal with, or if that is more of a state level where, um, uh, more elderly housing is built, or that the, um, maybe a can I don't, I don't know how to put this, after talking to Hillary Cole and a few people today from housing. Um, maybe put some people from the section eight over into the Tilden House and move the elderly folk down to the Berry Manor, because that's what its purpose was originally for. Um, so that they feel like they have a safe place to be, so that they start selling their homes and because the, the word around town right now is that, um, that the current housing for elderly is, is not safe.
Well, I think that's, that's worthy of discussion, I'm not sure that's in the purview of the planning commission, because it, I think it speaks more to how the housing authority, um, um, manages properties, which probably has a lot to do with the regulations that they need to, to follow. But I'm not, I'm not very knowledgeable about it, but it's another, certainly another area in the city that's could stand some discussion. And on, and understanding whether, whether, you know, there's a lot of things in Berry that are scary Berry where there's words out that, that might be true, but might not be, and, and, you know, things kind of repeat themselves. That's outside, I think that's outside of the planning commission's process. But I, I do think some of the things Jake suggested again are, are ideas that would, would be worth discussion by the planning commission or, and/or the city council. And I, I just think it would be, and my thought, just would be good to get as many minds involved that deal with this sitting around a table and batting some ideas around and, we, you know, the idea of brainstorming is there's no bad ideas. And then start to work through and see if some of those things are workable and can, can be implemented pretty quick. So Jake?
Yeah, sorry to dominate the, the commission time, I just, I'm such a nerd about this, and I, I do think, you know, Raylene has a point about um, the, about senior housing and supporting it, uh, because there are, you know, there could be, um, some incentives or bonuses that would be applied for senior housing, project age restricted senior housing projects, which I think is fifty plus housing. Um, I'm not sure if we have that as a distinct use in the U N I P development regulations, but, um, uh, but Cathedral Square is, is the, you know, the foremost developer of senior housing. Uh, but they mostly operate in Northwest Vermont, and the way the funding cycles work for those federally subsidized units um, is that, uh, they would tend not to compete with Downstreet, so, um, so there have been some private, um, age restricted housing developments I'm aware of in, in Vermont, but I'm not aware of any in Central Vermont, just because of the rents, so getting a new senior housing project going could, could very much hinge on having good, uh, the permissive zoning for senior housing. And then talking about some type of partnership between Downstreet and Cathedral Square, um, so that those two nonprofit housing developers are, 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 aren't competing, but are finding win-win situations to build to build senior housing.
Yeah, Janet?
Yeah, um, great, great dialogue for sure, um, senior housing in our zoning right now is permitted in almost, uh, almost all of the urban core municipal, uh, mixed use and all of the residential. Whereas assisted living, so senior housing is fifty-five plus. Uh, assisted living is a little bit different, but it includes residential care homes, that's predominantly conditional use in all of our residential and our downtown core districts, so, um, that with, with some discussion might be another easy fix, um, and we have lost two, maybe three, three um, residential care homes in the last five years, two to Washington County Mental Health, and another one who just um, sold it and it went, and it became a, a triplex out on Brooklyn Street, so. So, yeah, we don't have the, even the elder care that we used to, so. Just wanted to help inform.
Yeah, well, another challenge with that is there's a lot of sort of continuing care sort of communities that develop, um, that provide, you know, independent living, but also assisted living, and in some cases nursing care and memory care. Um, and the zoning, as you described it, doesn't really maybe contemplate that kind of development. So there's, there's other, you know, other sorts of ways that senior housing is, is developed. And, you know, as we've talked about, there are, in the past, there are a lot of houses in Berry that have a lot of bedrooms and only, uh, uh, senior couple living in it, because kids are all gone. And the mortgage is paid off and, and they like their house and they like their neighborhood and, and there's nothing particularly compelling in Central Vermont. Uh, that would do better for them. Oh, does anyone else have any thoughts about interim zoning, and is this something? Uh, I guess I'll, I'll ask two questions, one is it something that maybe would be a, a subject for the next planning commission agenda? To really devote some time and then also just try to, to get some ideas together. Now, that might involve asking commissioners to think about that ahead of the meeting and share any suggestions with Janet, so that people get a chance to look at them and think about them in advance of the meeting. Uh, Janet, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask all of you what, what your thoughts were, um, I've been, I've got probably seven or eight um, noted things since the zoning went into effect in twenty twenty, um, where our zoning districts themselves have prohibited expansion of housing, um. I don't know if we want to try to, i- if we would consider that low hanging fruit, um, changing our, some of our zoning district lines. Um, somebody right up on Prospect has a three unit, the third unit used, is, or was a store, and she'd love to turn it into an apartment, but she can't because the zoning district she's in won't allow it. So, um, she's frustrated, but she's being very patient. Um, so I think about things like that, um, Eastern Avenue, there was another situation there. Um, they wanted to do four complete units and they couldn't, so we put our heads together and got really creative about, um, how to get as maximize as many units as he could using boarding situations and apartments. Um, I can put it together and put it out there for discussion, uh, just wondered what, what your thoughts were. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to offer just a quick thought is, does the change in the state statute that would allow up to four units, uh, in any zoning district? Um, what does it start in January twenty-four, or does it start in January twenty-five, I'm not sure. But that might, that might have an impact on some of those things. Uh, so it's going to come, but one of the thoughts I had is if it's not coming that soon, is to consider getting in, in, in the city's ordinances sooner.
Luckily, three and four unit dwellings are permissible and in everything, in all, in all but one urban core, one mixed use, and is permissible and all residential.
Okay.
So, um, it's, it's, in some cases, we were ahead of the curve, in other cases, we, we were super conservative, so I think it's great conversation for sure.
So I think it'd be good to have Caitlin.
Then, yeah, I just, myself, okay, thank you, um, thanks, I just wanted to respond to your question about, like, um, I, I would really welcome, um, further discussion on this topic at a future meeting where I feel a little bit more prepared to contribute. I, I'm, you know, still rather new to all this, and so I haven't delved really deeply into the existing uh, all the existing, um, zoning regulations, but if, if there was something that I could look at, that said here the areas we're looking at changing, and this is how we might change them. Um, that would be really helpful, and, um, then I would feel, you know, prepared to offer my thoughts and opinions on it.
Okay, well, I think this was meeting just to kind of try to set that up. But we've had a lot of good ideas come out too. So, uh, Becky?
Thanks, I think I have, um, a question, which is, um, is there any discretion, given like how tight our housing situation is right now, in some of the examples that you've shared, Janet? Like, you, it sounds like you have no discretion to permit something that is a good idea, but maybe doesn't comply with our zoning laws, or like, can those people be sent to the DRB to get a like uh, variance from the zoning to be able to do some of the things while we're in this process? Cause it sounds like there are opportunities that are just not happening because of zoning that we know is not serving our community, and I'm just wondering, like, is there anything? I don't know, could city council make a proclamation or do something, or like, are there other ways around this? While we do the work that takes a time, like, I recognize that that's not the solution, but like, if we have people who are ready to build housing in our community, and we're like, oh, sorry, our zoning we wrote three years ago that we don't like, says you can't do it, that doesn't, that's not satisfying.
I think that's the idea of the interim zoning is that's the quick fix for the emergency and it's just. Chatting about finding the things that have pretty wide consensus and things that city council is agreeable to since they, they do the process. But in theory, they could put it on a, stuff on an agenda and at that, at their next meeting and make those changes. Uh, so that's, that's kind of the idea of the interim zoning is to do exactly what you thought is just identifying. Those things that seem to be low hanging fruit that would be impactful and not be harmful in the longer term.
Right, um, interim zoning is, is fondly referred to as one and done. It requires one public notice at the city council level. And it's, it goes into effect and is good for two years. I mean, worst cases, the city council could revoke this. The zoning and go back to the old one, um, that would, that would be a really drastic measure for sure, we, um. But there, there's lots of options and, um, just so you know, zoning administrators are bound by law to interpret the. The zoning literally, so just cause it's a great idea, if it's not allowed, you know, I don't want to go to court. I don't want Michelle to go to court, so.
Yeah, no, I, like, that's part of why I was asking, because I figured there was probably a reason, um, and that's a very good one.
Variances are dictate, are, are governed by state law and they're actually pretty exacting all the conditions that have to be met. So that's probably not a preferable way of trying to accomplish this because. Uh, it's hard to fit things into some of those needs for variance. And if they don't fit exactly, you have a potential for litigation, which, you know, doesn't help.
Got it.
Yes, David's correct, use variances are not allowed and I asked for that to be specifically put into. This zoning, um, we've had trouble in the past interpreting variance versus a use variance and. Um, don't want to go down that path again, so, um, we have opportunities for variances and waivers, but. A use variance, if it's not allowed, it's just plain not allowed, so.
Not allowed, yeah.
It's protection, it's protection on staff too, that we don't do something we're not supposed to either.
But if, if, is concern about certain uses, the way to manage that is make it a conditional use. Because then it has to go before the DRB for consideration. So that, that is a way to, to maybe accomplish that if there's things that we think we'd like to do, but. Maybe not blanket allowing it in the zoning. But saying that the, a public body can look at something and say, yeah, that's a, a good idea for this particular location, it makes sense. And at the same time, if they get another request, look at and say this, this doesn't make sense in this, this location. That's another kind of option.
Yeah, okay, and my other question was, um. Like, have we approached this poss- this possibility with city council and do we know how, like, what their temperature is on this?
Well, when I talked to Janet, uh, my suggestion was to put forward the idea. To see if city council might be interested in doing a joint meeting of some sort that was a working session. To do something like what we're doing now, but again, with a little more preparation, uh, and information and. You know, the, the best outcome would be, we have this great discussion. That there's a consent, pretty wide consensus about, let's just say, for example, four or five items that could be changed in interim zoning. And then the city council could take it from there. I just don't know if the council is receptive to that or if that would be a process they want to follow, but that would be a. A pretty fast track way of accomplishing things and getting, getting a broader range of input. I don't know, Jake, do you have any thoughts about if that's a good approach or something the city council would, would entertain?
I think we'd be open to it, you know, things are gonna start sooner, better, better than later because we're gonna start getting into budget, uh, discussions and. That's gonna dominate everything and then on top of that with flood discussions, so, um. I think it's, it could be an ask, but probably better like on a Saturday morning with the, with the time limit and a really clear. Uh, clear topics of discussion, clear language, clear background information, um. And, uh, some, some choices and consequences packaged.
Well, I, I definitely agree that if this is gonna be a meeting, it shouldn't just be appended to a regular agenda. Um, cause it just, that just is too much, um, I don't know if, if. Commissioners would be up for some kind of, uh, you know, Saturday morning. Meeting from, you know, nine to noon or something like that as an example. Um, and again, where, where there were some concrete ideas and, you know, thoughts for, uh, discussion. It, it might be that, that, I'm not sure the discussion would have so much specific language as, as. Talking about ideas, seeing if, if things make sense and then the, the direction it would come out would be for, for, uh. The city staff, be more work for Janet or, you know, somebody would have to take that and, and put it into, um. Into zoning speak, you know, to come up with specific language that would change the, the zoning that could then go back to city council. That, that reason, do you think that would make sense, Jake? And I think it's just finding, I think it's just, uh, maybe Janet talking to city manager. To Nicholas about, uh, when we might find a time that that could be done. Yeah, and I think you're correct, Jake, you know, there's a lot going on and it is going to be budget season and. And all these things with the north end and, and flood redevelopment are going to start heating up and require. A lot of attention, but this is part of the attention that might help move that process forward. Caitlin.
Yeah, I was just gonna kind of say the same thing that, like, there's a lot going on, but. This is really feels like something that's urgently needed to help with some of this. Flood recovery, um, that, you know, finding housing for people that were displaced is, I can't think of. Many things that are more urgent, um, than figuring out where these people are gonna go over the winter, so.
Yeah, and, you know, one concern is that that process starts and then all of a sudden, somebody wants to do something, it's, oh, well. The zoning doesn't allow it. I would rather. The zoning allowed it or tho- those issues got addressed upfront so that when people make plans, uh, they know. Kind of know what the rules are and, and it's not a roadblock at the time. And certainly, uh, if planning companies are designed to, hired to do grand plans and conceptual plans or. Develop them from there, like, there's some discussion about for the north end, uh. Better that, that they know what the constraints are before they invest too much in it than, then bump into them or. Even tell them, tell us what's in our zoning that might be a constraint to accomplishing what, what you're thinking about. So I think, oh, yes, Becky.
I just have a clarifying question, um, so for our next meeting. Wha- what we're being asked to do and, and what we're asking Janet to do is not necessarily write, like, redline the zonings. But to give us like, a list of where we might, of like the kinds of changes we might consider.
I think, yeah, I think that's the idea and I, and I think my thought is that if commissioners have ideas. You know, write down your idea with a paragraph explaining what and why. And, and so that there can be a packet of things, this is sort of running parallel to. Perhaps having a meeting with city council. So if there's a working session with city council that can come sooner rather than waiting for the next planning commission, that might. That might replace that for the planning commission, but I think the point would still be for all the planning commissioners to think about. Uh, things that are in zoning and you can certainly find it. On the city's website or you may have ideas like we've discussed, just think about them, put them on paper, put a. I guess a little plug forward or paragraph explaining, you know, what, what thought process is and why it might help. Uh, and whether that's. Part of a packet for a work session, joint work session with city council or, or part of the packet for the next planning commission meeting. It's the same, same thing. Does that make, that make sense? Are commissioners willing to, uh, go home and, and think about that stuff and, 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 and get back to Janet?
Yeah, Jake. David, if I could just jump in and say on second thought, you know, recognizing, uh, how much staff loves to come and work on Saturdays as well as. People love to give up Saturdays, it might, it may work to just have council join a planning commission, normal. Planning commission time slot and you increase your frequency of meetings, um, to get, to get this packaged.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. I, my suggestion is that Janet talk to Nicholas. And figure out what the best course is, uh, that meets the staff's needs and the planning commission needs and the city council needs. But get something going sooner rather than later. Does that sound reasonable as a way forward? Okay, well, there was no specific action designed for this. This was really meant to be a discussion and just kind of figure out if we want to move forward and, and how that might happen, so I think we've. Got a consensus on that, so off we go. So Janet's gonna be waiting for lots of emails from planning commissioners now. So the next item on the agenda is confirming our next meeting date, which is, which is November ninth. Um, and we also just talked about, uh, all having a meeting before that, that's, that's going to be a site visit. For the, the North Main and Elm Street project. Uh, the next item is, uh, staff updates and you did have that was in your agenda packet. I don't know if anybody had, number one, did Janet, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I would love to add some positivity, um, we've had lots of discussions lately with people who want to increase housing here in Barry City. Um, there is a, uh, I guess he's becoming a developer, I knew him as a land surveyor. Uh, working with a property owner, uh, thirteen Hill Street. Uh, owned by Ishtar Properties, they are looking to potentially. Build, uh, three multi-unit buildings on that property. They're trying to work out the bank, uh, behind it, which actually is the bank behind the hilltop houses that were. Torn down in twenty fourteen, um, so they're working out that, but, um. I think the problem with that one is going to be the entrance, the property entrance is only thirteen and a quarter feet wide, so, um. We've got a meeting sup- set up with them as well as public safety officials, uh, to get their temperature on what they think about. You know, safety and fire truck turnaround, but here is somebody who's looking at, um, trying to do something with a piece of property. Um, I've also been told the railroad has been eye-vauling more property to buy up. They're looking at a property across the street to tear down for one of their communication boxes. At the moment, that house is vacant, but, you know, here we go, wanting to tear down a house, right? Um, so there's that, so I, I take that as a positive, positive move forward. Um, I just spoke with the owner this afternoon of one seventy-one North Main. Used to be the nail salon, it was, some of you folks who've been here a while used to, we call that the Beltrami Building. Um, they want to, um, it's the old Magnet Movie Theater. Um, they want to put in a, an actual second floor, it's a, like a false ceiling. Put in four units of housing on the second floor and redevelop the first floor. Uh, for, uh, retail, uh, office space, whatever they can get in there, so that, that's great. Um, Berry Gardens up at the end of Prospect Street really was trying to figure out how to bring modular homes onto the backside behind the nursing home. Um, but it's too wet back there, which is frustrating, but they were getting creative on trying to. You know, help their travelers and some of their nursing staff, so people are, they're being creative, they're trying to figure out things and. Uh, I feel like if it's not zoning, then it's the topography, but I think we'll get there somehow. Um, the owner of, uh, the radio station at the end of Jake Street just sold. They're gonna turn that into a single family home, um, it's a big piece of property, but. It's not going to be commercial anymore, it's gonna be residential, so I, I, I feel like that's a good thing. Um, so, so there's a lot happening. Uh, Turning Point, as you know, uh, got a grant with the city, they're still trying to get themselves moved down to, um. The building next to the fire station, they have all their funding, they're just trying to get through some of their phase. Uh, in very mental site assessment work, so that's, that's gonna be coming along once they move, the building in the north end. Could free up, maybe some, maybe the owner will improve the housing, add to the housing, who knows? Uh, I think there's an opportunity there. Granite City Apartments, which is a partnership between Downstreet Housing and EverNorth, which are developers. Uh, we're talking about the Ward Five School that's moving along. And they own Bromer Street Apartments, if any of you go up Beckley Street, right before it turns to Beckley Hill and Barry Town. They are renovating those apartments and they're turning one apartment into a fully accessible unit. So they're improving their stock as well, so I, I just, there's a lot going on and I just want to share. All these little wins that, you know, people are, people are working and, and, and it's great. Um, I finished the glossary that I was asked to do a year and a half ago, so that is now on the planning commission page. Um, it's eighty-five pages of acronyms and definitions and. If you're ever stuck and you don't know what something means, I hope it's there, if it's not, let me know. And lastly, um, the city's hazard mitigation, uh, plan expired a year ago in December. And that assists us with getting funding, um, it's called the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund Funding. And when we had a plan, we were at the seventy-five twenty-five, which meant that we only had to kick in twenty-five percent match. Um, so we're down to nine and a half, nine and a half at the moment. Um, the city council just awarded that contract to Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And they are eager to get started and, um, they think they can update our plan and get us going by. I, I think Keith said by March or April, they'll be putting a draft in front of FEMA for approval. So I find that really, really exciting. Um, and last, um, this is a personal win, um. The hazard mitigation, uh, project that we did on Granite Street, uh, two years ago now. Um, it was in increasing the size of the storm drains that went from, from Granite Street and which is in front of. Uh, the turn to go to Capstone all the way out to the river pass, uh, Deserol Machines. Uh, we've been waiting, I've been bugging Vermont Emergency Management now for many years for that funding to come through and they. Finally convinced FEMA, I think, um, to give us our third and final requisition. So we're gonna be seeing a check for over a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in reimbursement. And as, as the city manager and the assistant city manager say, it's already spent, but. It, it means that's not money that's gonna go get written off, um, so I, I just, when we can get little wins like. That I just, I think it's great, so, um, those are the high points I just wanted to share with you folks, so thank you very much.
Thanks, that's terrific, um, does anyone have any questions for Janet about staff report? I think Becky likes the, uh, report. Um, so the next item on the agenda is roundtable. So I don't know if any, if any commissioners have anything they want to say, it's an opportunity to do that. Rosemary.
Hi, um, Becky and I just wanted, as long as the mayor's here and the planning commission, Becky and I received an invitation. To participate in the forum on October eighteen. And Becky has stepped up the last couple of times about being interim chair and vice chair, so I felt as though. I should be the one stepping up this time, so I, I've offered to, to be. The planning commission voice on, uh, the infrastructure and planning, um, topic. But I just want to make sure we're all singing from the same songbook. Uh, I don't know, Jake, I mean, there's so many conversations going on on council level. I just want to make sure we're, we're all just have the common theme of what our message is to the city, so if. There's anybody that has feedback about that, I would appreciate it.
Uh, anyone want to speak up just now? I guess I would say in a very broad sense that the infrastructure and planning things. Um, you know, it's gonna be important to try to be. I guess I would say in a very broad sense that the infrastructure and planning things, um you know, it's gonna be important to try to be resilient. And, and that when things get updated and replaced, that, that they're more floodproof, because we're gonna have another flood someday, we know that. And you know, just kind of putting everything back the way it, it was a sort of the Albert Einstein theory of, you know, trying the same thing over and over is a definition of insanity, so, so um. You know, I just.
Becky, are you okay with? My doing that, are you sure?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Anyone else have anything you want to add?
I just have a question, uh have we had the second reading for the um ADU zoning? And then do we know when that will be?
Uh I am, I asked the city manager where that stood and that has been uh delayed, just so we can work out and hear when the proclamation comes to an end, what we're gonna do with, with the zoning. Um it was a pretty heated debate about the parking. Um it is supposed to go to the second reading, that's what it's ready for. Um I think it's just a matter of, of time, I don't think it. I hope it's not going to be another heated debate. A second public here, uh reading and hearing is, is supposed to be relatively smooth sailing off into, you know. They, they vote on it and fourteen days later, after Carol gets the notice published that, that it's good to go. So I think it's just a timing issue and I can, I will check in again with Nicholas and see when he thinks we could get that scheduled and I'll let you folks know.
Awesome, thanks.
You're welcome. It looks like David got his call maybe. Becky, do you want to maybe?
Possibly, I'm sure, uh I had the agenda open in front of me, there it is, um. Okay, any other uh comments from the commissioners? Hey, in that case, I think I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Thanks, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. Oh, fantastic, so that's great to hear. All right, I think we're adjourned.
Hey, thanks.
Thanks, Janet, bye, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.